Commissioners meeting for a public hearing this evening. The public hearing is to discuss, excuse me, the Metropolitan Sewer District's proposed budget and recommended rates. Okay. Are we gonna, we'll go and have public comment first, okay? Darrell Franklin? Uh huh. Or did you, I'm thinking maybe if we have a little summary for us.
Diana, yeah, I think does have a, yeah. You want to do that now, Diana?
Yeah.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thanks for having us back again today.
Yes, welcome.
I will go through the summary I went through at the last meeting, which is abbreviated from the first meeting, and I may try to abbreviate a little bit more as well in the interest of everyone's time. But we are here again today to talk about MSD's recommended 2023 operating budget and our 2023 through 2026 capital improvement program, along with proposed rate resolution for the sewer rates. And so quickly, just as I mentioned, we had our first hearing a little over a week ago on December 1st, so I'm not going to go through in all the detail everything I presented at that time, but we did provide the same slides at the back of this complete presentation. I do want to, though, just recap again where we are at and what we're trying to balance when we presented the budgets to the board for consideration this year. So to start, you know, we understand the realities of our situation at the utility in trying to operate what is now an aging system, and that really is not unlike most utilities in the United States, both water and wastewater. I shared this memo from USCPA just from September of this year, in which they stated that our country faces unprecedented challenges with the aging drinking water distribution systems and wastewater conveyance and treatment plants that have far exceeded their useful life. So that's, you know, that is the reality with MSD's treatment plants and our sewers. In many respects, we have aging infrastructure, and it requires more investment. We also have additional needs that we need to meet that are, you know, causing us to really have a budget, budget need that is greater than what has been able to be approved. Some of these are additional regulatory compliance requirements. That's not just our consent decree, but it's other regulatory requirements, service area expansion, meaning we're building new assets. Our O and M costs are higher. We're going to talk about that very briefly due to labor and inflation. And just in all, that the reactive maintenance does cost more than a proactive approach. So just quickly, again, I don't want to go through this in great detail, but it is important to point out that the condition of our sewers, and we have over 3,000 miles of sewers in Hamilton County, that covers about 290 square miles, but our sewer system is aging. And we, unfortunately, we do not know the condition of all of these sewers. So only 60% of the system has been inspected. That means that we're constantly trying to allocate risk and allocate our resources to those highest-risk assets to rehab them before they fail. So as you can see, about 460 miles are in, of our sewers are in that extreme to high-risk failure. And when that, when we have sewers at that level of risk and we're unable to repair or replace them prior to failure, it creates very costly projects. These were just some examples. I shared in greater detail, but you have there a sewer repair on Ray Street that was by the streetcar, really close to foundations, very expensive. Another really close to a foundation of a home. And then the picture on the bottom is Spooky Hollow. That's where we have an elevated sewer that was leaking into a creek. So these are just examples of some of these emergency repair projects that end up costing anywhere from half a million to a million dollars because they're done on an emergency basis. We know that even though our sewers are old, we can rehab them if we do it timely. Oftentimes, we can re-line a sewer rather than having to replace it, even if it is 50, 100 years old. So we really want to continue with those efforts to assess the condition of our sewers and repair them before we have failures. This is just a benchmark that we shared. This table on the bottom left is a, is based on an assessment that was done as part of our Phase 1 or a Phase 2A proposal several years ago. So we know we have at least 13 billion worth of assets. It's likely higher. And that really equates to, based on industry standards, the need to invest $150 million annually to keep that, those sewers and those facilities renewed and, you know, again, prevent those emergency failures. However, our annual CIP on average has been much less than that. Our annual investment has been closer to 100 million, and that's about 50% less than industry standards. So with that background, I just want to briefly go over the capital budget request first. The capital budget request, as you know, we present a five-year capital improvement program. The board is, however, only authorizing funding for one year, so I will focus on the 2023 capital request, which is about 140.5 million. That covers the project breakdown on the left. There is about 31 projects for planning and design, eight projects proposed for construction, and then five allowances. And these are construction allowances that allow us to do work throughout the year. The amount to be appropriated would just be the planning and design plus the allowances. Our individual projects are approved as we complete design and come to the board on an individual basis. We do have, as you can see, the five-year CIP included in our program, and those costs are beginning to rise in the out-years of the planning phase of this capital program. And that is really based on a Phase 2A capital, Phase 2A consent decree program that is still under development. So those project costs, those total annual costs could very well change, perhaps significantly, once we complete that process, which we've been working together with the county on. Let me move to the operating budget request. So I meant to say this at the beginning, I want to be clear. I kept the slides the same as they were from the initial presentation, but I have a few notes in here where we provided an update just earlier today. So the slide says at the top, 2023 operating budget request of 235.5 million and the breakdown there. But we did today present an updated budget resolution for the board, for the, yeah, for the operating budget, to reduce it by 4 million. This is based on county recommendation and feedback that we received through this process. So that is what we will now discuss, you know, kind of what that means for our budget request overall. We, I'm sorry, the, I just want to also be clear that the version that we submitted today, the operating budget request, we did also correct the debt service obligation. So that is now 84 point, 84 million, as shown on this table. And then we reduced the other line items by 4 million, and that equates to now a $231.5 operating budget. As you can see, that's a very small increase over, over the current year, 2022 budget. MSD has stated, and I have gone over, you know, in these hearings in particular, that what we presented to the board initially was a budget that we felt, we had already made a lot of significant reductions, strategic reductions, to, to present something that we felt was sufficient, but really did not meet all of the needs of our divisions to operate based on known cost increases. We have a lot of inflationary impacts that MSD is not immune to. So we've talked about the rising cost in our operations with chemicals, utility, equipment, parts, really, you know, power and chemicals and fuel are one, are three of the largest drivers of these increases. And so because of that, we really had already gone through our budget before we presented the initial request and tried to find as many other areas that we could reduce to limit the overall increase from 2022 to 2023. That was the budget we presented in the first hearing, and that was dated November 18th. And we had a total of just under 140 million in our O and M portion, which had been the area that we'd been working with the county really to, to get down to the targets. We initially had a target of 138.1 we were looking at, that has since been reduced, and the county recommendation was 136 for O and M. And that is what overall we've, we've done and presented to the board today. How we've built our budget, though, again, we presented a budget that incorporated the cost for personnel increases due to negotiated salary increases for all of our represented employees. We then only included the most critical needs that we felt in terms of those increases, and again, offset that by reductions in other divisions. So when we presented that initial budget before making the $4 million increase, what we were accounting for primarily in terms of an increase were those increases in natural gas, chemicals, disposal contracts, and other, just, you know, cost for treating and collecting wastewater. One example I gave, I think in the first hearing, was the cost of treatment chemicals. And on average, our chemical costs have gone up 40%. Some of the chemical, some of the chemicals we use, such as pericloride, has gone up 70% in the last year. Sodium hypochlorite has gone up 80% in the last year. So we're doing everything we can to, to manage this budget request. However, those are just simply costs we cannot, you know, we, we don't have any control over them, and we likely will need those increases. So just finally, on the O and M budget reductions, so again, initially, we trimmed what we thought was what was needed for MSD to get to the November 18th request. And I shared these examples at the, under the first bullet, bullet at the last hearings, so I don't need to read through those, but those are some of those strategic reductions we made. And since that, over the last few days or the last week, we have cut an additional 4 million from our budget. We have done this as carefully and as best as we can to not have an immediate impact on operations or result in personnel reductions. We spread this cut, these cuts over both personnel and non-personnel budgets for nearly all of our divisions, although our wastewater treatment division, non-personnel budget, is bearing the brunt. Again, that is because that's where most of our costs are. That's where, where the increases have been, and it's where, you know, we have several million dollars increased from 2022. We're proposing to keep the SBU budget flat. I want to point out, we did reduce the increase that had been in there, and that is because the proposed, the annual SBU budget has remained slightly below what was budgeted. So we feel as though we don't need that increase today. However, that is weather-dependent, and we would certainly track that very carefully, along with all of the other non-personnel needs that we may, in fact, need to request an additional allocation for. So turning to the rates, MSD presented a rate resolution for the board's consideration. As you know, we have not had a rate increase since 2015. Meanwhile, again, we've added facilities, labor costs, and all other inflation and cost of our operations has increased. You know, we do feel as though at this time, a rate increase is necessary just to maintain the level of service that MSD needs to provide. We are not alone. This is really, I think I shared this last time as well, the average cost nationwide for wastewater treatment and wastewater collection for the average homeowner in 2021 went up 3.1%, and is predicted to go up 4% each year for the next four years. So that's just one of the nationwide benchmarks in terms of, you know, the, this utility, the services we provide, and the, the costs that continue to rise. And I should point out, that's not taking into consideration any of the consent decree obligations. That's just a national average for general wastewater treatment and collection. Just quickly, I shared this as background, annually MSD completes a, what we call a rate study. It's our revenue requirement study, and we deliver that to the county during the budget process and then talk through what the, you know, financial goals and targets are from the county. And this year was really no different. We have, for the last several years, shown that a modest rate increase would be needed to avoid steep rate hikes and to build capacity for the future capital program. The rate study, I, I feel as though it's, it's a tool for the board to make determinations on rates. There are many variables, and, and really, you know, essentially, what we were showing was with the projected O and M expenditures and the capital expenditures, a rate increase was needed to really maintain the, and to meet the county's financial, the key financial indicators. Let me jump to the next page to talk about what those are. So, and just overall, MSD and the county really were aligned, and what has been presented from MSD is a 3% system-wide increase. When I say system-wide, that's just to mean that this is all of MSD's sewer service charges, including the minimum charge, the commodity charge, the surcharge, and the pre-treatment charges, all would be increased at a, at a 3% level. And this, these revenue increases are really driven by the overall need to fund the capital program and to achieve the key financial indicators in terms of keeping a stable balance in our, in our fund balances. So those key indicators, as we've identified, are maintaining 60 days of operating expenditures, maintaining the required debt service coverage to meet bond covenants, achieving total debt service coverage at or above the target set by the county's financial advisor, and maintaining minimum liquidity in the surplus fund. So again, this increase in revenue is estimated to provide adequate funds for the 2023 operating budget and to move toward the targeted debt service coverage, I'm sorry, the operating and the capital budget for 2023, and to move towards the targeted debt service coverage. We do anticipate that additional increases will be required to sustain, to achieve and sustain those key financial indicators and to build capacity for what we know is coming in terms of a potentially larger capital program once the Phase 2A is finalized. And that, that is it for the summary I wanted to give today. I'm happy to answer questions now or after public comment, or to go over anything I may have skipped through.
Thank you for your comments. We'll open it up for the public who is here to speak. You have two minutes. Thank you for coming.
My name is Darrell Franklin. I live in North Fairmount. I'm here with COFA, Citizens United for Action. And me personally, I don't have a problem with the rate increase, but I do have a problem with the accountability of the taxpayers' money. And I have a problem with the way it was used in my neighborhood and the lack of the effective use of the tax dollars. Now, they built a bioswale in North Fairmount between Carl and Denham Streets. It's a beautifully landscaped park that does effectively what it was supposed to do. But then they put signs on it that say, "Keep off the grass, do not trespass," so nobody can use what could be a nice little neighborhood park. Quarter mile away, they built what I, I believe is called a lick-run spillway or something like that. It's a beautiful piece of landscaping, probably an engineering marvel, but they wasted so much time, and they, it was like a one-step forward, two-steps-back bumbling circus act trying to get done with this thing, and they came up with an engineering marvel. It's a, it does very efficiently what it's supposed to do. However, they created this beautiful landscape that no one in the community can use because they didn't put, they, they put 12 parking spaces in the middle of the park, 12 parking spaces at the middle of a park that's over a half-mile long and 200 yards wide, 100 yards wide, all the way through. But nobody can use it because the traffic on both sides has no parking, and the speed limit that says 35 is just a suggestion because most people do 45 or 50. And nobody wants to send their children to that park. And if they do get there, the parents, if you go, you can't park there. And that's really not the issue, because what they built does exactly what they said it would do, and I don't have a problem with that. But in our community, we have sewage running into my neighbor's houses, into my house, into everybody's house who lives near the landslide areas in our neighborhood. Now, you can put all of this stuff in to move the stormwater that you want to, but if we have to live there, we don't get anything. They're still not repairing the pipes in our neighborhood. They're still not stopping the sewage from going through our yards. So if you get a rate increase, you think you could spend some of it on helping the citizens who paid the taxes actually get some relief in our neighborhood that actually helps us instead of giving us trophies that help the environment. I'm sure they do a beautiful job, and we need what they do. But that is not all we need.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Marilyn Wall?
Thank you, and thank you for holding another hearing on this issue. And I also appreciate getting the additional information that we've gotten from MSD and also from the county. We've submitted some other written comments.
Make sure your mic, because they're trying to do the sign language.
Okay, sorry. So, sorry. So we should admit it's some written comments because there's a lot to cover in all of this, and we certainly hope that with this rate increase and so on, we can, MSD will be able to finish, they're doing their study of the impervious fee for impervious surfaces this year, and including the credits and incentives so that we can address a lot more of the stormwater issues out here. We think the rate structure still needs to be modified to not charge people for water they don't use, if they don't use the full 3 CCF per month, and not, and no longer give discounts to large-volume water users. Much of what we're seeing here in terms of rate increases is coming from stormwater. It's not coming from more sewage or more sewage customers. We really think some of the cost on some of the budgets that are proposed in the out-years for high-rate treatment plants and so on need to really be reconsidered in terms of trying to get stormwater out of the system instead of paying more and more for bigger pumps, bigger treatment plants, and bigger pipes to handle more and more stormwater because we know this is going to get more and more difficult as, with climate change storms and so on. And also getting the stormwater out of the pipes would help with the basement backups and all the problems related to that. So we, we included with our comments today just a map that shows historically how many streams were in the Lower Mill Creek area. That's in the blue on the top of the map. This is an MSD map. And the bottom shows all of the pipes, and you can see that there are far more pipes in the ground now than there ever were streams to carry away the stormwater. And hopefully, we can make more of an effort to get back to a more natural system that will help reduce costs. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Okay. Darlene Capel? Caple? Okay. All righty. Welcome.
I'm Darlene Capel with, I live in North Fairmount and also with COFA. Are we prepared for disaster relief if our storm sewers are not repaired or maintained on a regular basis? Because we do not want to have the same problem that Kentucky and Missouri had just recently with flooding, where people lost their homes. We need stormwater out of our sanitary sewer. We seem to have plenty of money for tourism, but nothing to help homeowners with repair and to protect us from stormwater damage. We would like to see the stormwater infrastructure repaired so we can prevent damages to our homes and property. That's all I got to say.
Thank you so much for your comments. I'd also make a note that we have additional paperwork from Marilyn Wall, which she indicated, and it's on, on for record. So Jackie Griller? Gruer, okay. Welcome.
I'm just speaking to a, a single project that's in my neighborhood. It's Ludlow Run, and I think it was supposed to be part of Phase 2. And Arcatus was contracted in May of 2019. It's, the project's on the MSD website, and you can read the process that they've done with Arcatus. And the first few reports that Arcatus made had some data in it. What I read most, but it looks like timelines have just been extended, and mostly what I read now is, as, number one, what they do is perform project administration and resource management, communicated updates to MSDGC. What does that mean? That they talked. Another one is communicated project schedule updates and met with client to discuss schedule update. So it, in the, there's a report put in every three to four months, and the data's not being used, it's not being looked at, as far as I can tell, there's no progress. And there's been no community engagement to tell us what is happening and why it's not happening. And the more, the longer you take to do something, the more the price is going to go up. So materials are always going to increase, and if you can get in there and get it done, then you don't have to spend more on materials as time goes by. So the study was done in 2012 that focused on keeping stormwater out of the sewers, the CSOs. Ludlow Run has six CSOs on it.
Go ahead.
So, so the, and on the property I'm most familiar with, with my granddaughter and stepdaughter living on, the CSO will overflow and, and flood their land, their yard. So hasn't gone into the house. And this study, the people that went to it said, oh, what makes most sense, rather than dig up and put in a lot of pipes, is to use some green infrastructure and keep as much stormwater out as possible. But we were never informed about really why that study wasn't advanced. And it's really hard to see increases in prices when you feel like you're not seeing something happen that is supposed to have happened.
Thank you so much for your comments. I don't have any other cards, but we do have the experts here from MSD. I don't want to open it, you know, but if someone has a question for someone that's here representing MSD, I know you had an opportunity to get a card to make comments, but if there's a question, a fiery, that's been on your heart or something you want to ask since we have our experts here, just come up and, because this will be our last public hearing. Oh, you had a card.
Yeah, I was a little late in getting it up here, too.
Oh, that's okay. I'm glad I said that.
I didn't have to say anything.
So Wanda Ball?
Aye, Commissioners. I'm Wanda Ball from COFA, Communities United for Action. And as many of you know, I know on Commissioner Dree House and Dumas, you're new to, to us. But anyway, we have come down for seven years asking you to not increase the sewer rates because people simply cannot afford it. Every year, MSD, not only, it's long before Diana Christie, they will come and they say, "We need this rate increase because we can't make it." The Commissioners say, "No, you cannot," and they make it. So with that in mind, we ask you to, once again, hold off. We still are in the middle of COVID, and we still are in the middle of large unemployment rates, and even though Commissioner Reese has implemented the 513 relief bus, you're still subject to the, the funding of the bus, which dries out, and then you put back in, and hopefully you get more money. We have also been trying to get an expansion to the customer assistance program. We asked you all for a customer assistance program, which you were gracious enough to give to us, but it is so limited in its scope. There are a lot of people that still can use and benefit it, benefit from it, and it could be expanded to include seniors that rent within the guidelines of the income requirements, and yet they're not included. So we would ask that you would help us to change the legislation so that we can expand our, our current customer assistance program to include low-income families that pay their, their to include low-income families that pay their water, that we have disability people that pay their water that cannot afford it. And we, it was something else we had asked for. But in any event, we need help to expand the customer assistance program to help those people that are still struggling trying to pay their utilities. As you all know, the sewer portion is the largest part of your water bill. And we're in a position where we cannot pay it because if you don't pay anything on it or you try to just pay the water portion, the sewer is connected and you get disconnected. So, you know, we're asking the Commissioners to, for one more year at least, to please not raise the rate for the sewer, for the sewer rates for MSD. They can make a way if they need to.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your comments. Okay, I'd like to open it up for the Commissioners if you have any comments.
I just want to thank everyone who came out this evening. And I know that we kind of had to try to rush to have a public hearing on this topic. And we haven't raised rates for a couple of years, and so this is new to a lot of people. I had asked the administration to look at if we could use ARPA dollars. And my understanding was that we got a report back today. And he'll talk more about that, that we could not use those. But I want to look at every single thing. But I also do think that January is going to be a tough hit for a lot of people. We talked about COVID, long-term COVID. They call it COVID long. Or is it long COVID? Long COVID. And we talked about that from a health perspective, but there is a long COVID from an economic perspective too. And with the fact that many people are going to get hit in January with higher property taxes. Both if you live in the city now, the city council got rid of the rollback. We did not move forward with a full 30%. We do have a levy that is going to increase for that particular time. And we still have people that are struggling. And so my thought is, I also felt like we should not raise. I know we've gone from 12% to 7% to now 3%, but even $5 right now, people will drive, you know, almost a mile to get 10 cent on a gallon, trying to save a dollar here and there. And from what I've been hearing from a lot of people and seeing people, the grocery store, et cetera, people are saying they just cannot afford it. And I just thought if we could hold this year with no raise, understanding that we've got some big mountains to climb coming up because of federal unfunded mandate dealing with the consent decree. But it would give us a whole year to have the type of meetings that they had when the consent decree first came down and be able to get more people understanding, involved. And who knows, hopefully, the economy would recover. And now we in a different situation. But right now, a lot of people are budgeting down to almost zero every month paying the bills. I've talked to several people and said, I paid all my bills for, you know, December, but I don't have no money left. And so that extra, whatever it is, is going to be really tough on a lot of people. So that's kind of where, I guess, I am in trying to figure out how we can get through 23 and then use 23 to have the outreach, the meetings, the, not just the town hall like we're doing, but just some of those deeper dives where we can really educate people where they're going. The other thing I am concerned, and it was said here today, is that you're paying more, but you're not getting more. And people are at a point now, if they pay more, they want to get something. Projects we've, as the board, some of our board members, we have expressed concern about some of the projects that were supposed to be done or promised to be done. And, you know, we're getting complaints that it's not happening from the public standpoint. So I think that's one of the things that I'm concerned about is people feeling like they're paying more, they're not getting more, things that were supposed to happen aren't happening. And at the same time, it's one of the toughest economies that we have besides when we went into the recession. So I just wanted to keep those things in mind. I understand there'll be some concern about, you know, what's going to be our bond rate and borrowing rate and those kind of things. And a lot of times when you have credit, you might can't borrow as much. You might have to put some of those things on hold. So again, I'm going to, all the way to the wire, if there's any way, I was telling Mr. Ludo of this anyway, but I think there is a way to be able to, because when we first started out, they said, we can't do it if we don't go up 12%. Then it's, oh, no, we can't do it if we don't go up 7%. Now always, if we don't go up 3%. I just would ask MSD to do what we're asking the public to do, to grit down. I mean, if we raise the rates, we're telling the public, figure it out. But on our side, we're not saying, figure it out. So that's my concern is basically is timing. I think the timing for me is the issue based on where the economy is right now and based on where people's individual budgets. We don't have a moratorium anymore. If you don't pay it, they're going to cut you off. If you don't pay it, they will cut you off. And you're right, we do have some services with the 513, but everybody doesn't qualify. I mean, the senior citizens, they don't qualify. That's why we had to try to put another fund. They don't qualify, and we don't have as much money for that fund. We don't have as much money for the homeowners as we do for the renters. So, you know, this is a, this is a major, major issue. And I just think, you know, we don't have it a couple of weeks. It's going to be January. And when those bills come in, it's going to be a tough, tough, tough January. So that's the reason that I was raising the questions and the issues that I have. And that's why I just believe we need a little more time. And we understand we got some big things coming forward, but maybe we can hold and maybe the economy will bounce back and at least, very least, let people get prepared. If we get out and have a lot of public hearings and going through and meeting with folks, the people might could get prepared, but you don't have but a couple of weeks and you have no time to prepare. And I just want to make sure we're not going to have a lot of people getting shut off because they just can't afford extra $5, $20, $15. We got people can't afford a turkey. It's just that tough out here. For, I'm talking about not people that are just destitute. I'm talking about people that's been paying their bills all the time, paying their property taxes all the time, don't get a break anywhere. Those are the people that's going to get hit the hardest. And I just think we just need a little more time. So that's what I wanted to say. I want to thank all of you guys who got down here as quick as you can this evening to join us. And we were, as we heard it, we tried to get a public hearing going, two public hearings going, as we heard it, as we got the information. So I just wanted to reiterate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dre House?
Thank you. Thank you all for coming down. Thank you to Marilyn as well for coming down. Really appreciate it. A couple of things, though, before I have any comments. We heard about Ludlow Run, and that was a project that we talked about a number of years ago. Can we get an update from MSD on Ludlow Run while the residents are still in the room?
Hi, Commissioners. Yeah, I can talk about Ludlow Run briefly. That was a project. There are six CSOs upstream of the area. It was a project that looked like there was going to be a project. We started planning two years ago. We're currently, we did flow monitoring. That took one year. So that's what, why there appears to be, you know, kind of a stop in work. We had to do one year of flow monitoring. We're calibrating the model. This is upstream, I think, of CSO 12, which is a very large Ludlow Run CSO that, closer to the Mill Creek interceptor. That will have to be a Phase Two B project.
Ryan, can you just pull your mic up just a little?
Yeah, sorry. So we're, we expect to have a report done in the spring. I think we provided the updated schedule to Marilyn Wall based on her request just within the last week, and our website has that update now. But we're not sure that there's a project for those upstream CSOs because everything that we've, we've looked at so far appears that the remaining overflow volume, which is the consent decree requirement, is already met. So there isn't, there aren't overflows that would trigger a regulatory requirement. That's not the final word on it. Like I said, the, the report will be done probably in about six months. But there is a larger CSO downstream of that that will eventually have to be dealt with. And that one is not in the Phase Two A. So that's where it's at, where it stands right now. Happy to talk more, have to talk afterwards.
Okay, let's, let's do that. Is that okay with you? Okay, yeah, okay. Yeah, I just, I remember this one. I remember sitting in a church at a public hearing and hearing a lot about Ludlow Run. So I appreciate your patience on that. Okay, thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Extend the conversation, I think, after the hearing. The other thing before I say anything about what the action might be here of the board. The legislation related to relief, I have not talked to Senator Thomas lately. I don't know. And I will, I will do that and reach out. We had legislation that, we have a program for seniors, but we were not able, because of state law, to expand it to other populations. And so Cecil Thomas was going to run some legislation. I have not spoken with him recently about that. So a follow-up, do you have an update on that?
Here, you want to come to the mic, please? Thank you.
It's my understanding it was submitted to a committee, and it has been there since then. After the election, it was my understanding that Senator Thomas was going to try to attach it to another bill to see if he could push it through before the end of the year. In the event that he's not able to do that, then it's my understanding he's going to resubmit it on the House floor and ask Kathy Ingram to submit it again on the Senate floor. So it's in a holding pattern right now.
Thank you. Appreciate that update. So, and I appreciate some of the comments. We've got a bit of a history here with some, really with everybody in the room. And so I think we have been in a position, or I should say, I have been in a position as a board member here to hold rates flat ever since I got here. So we've held rates flat for eight years. The reason we could do that was because we had a significant reserve, like in the bank account. And so we had said to MSD, and I know I said, I will raise rates when I need to, but it doesn't appear as though we need to because we've got money in the reserve. We had not spent it down to that target amount that we need to have in the reserve for fiscal reasons and bond ratings and all of these other things. So we've been spending that reserve down. And because we've been doing that, we haven't had to increase rates to get the asset management projects continuing to move and the consent decree projects continuing to move. As we said today, though, we've hit that target. We are at the amount that is fiscally responsible to have. In fact, we're dipping a little bit below it with the current budget that's in front of us. And it does, it ebbs and flows a little bit. And so there, you know, you have to have a comfort level with that, but it's not too far below. But we've reached a point now, from my vantage point, where we can no longer rely on the reserve because we have spent it down to the point where we, we need to have money in that reserve for asset management, capital projects, debt service, the SBU program, which you just heard. It's, as always, there, it's not, we still have the same amount of money in the SBU program. We will allocate as needed if we've got weather events that dictate that. But we haven't gone through all of the money that we allocated this year because the weather hasn't been as bad as it was the year before. So, so that project remains. We need money in the account for that. So all of these things to say that I feel as though we've hit a tipping point. And we have heard the citizens and we have heard the ratepayers say, we cannot afford major increases to MSD rates. And, and for the last eight years, we've held those rates flat. Because we have heard this from the citizens of the county. And so MSD came in with a budget a few weeks ago, maybe a month ago. And the budget dictated an increase of about, it's a little over 7%, which this board was worried about, that's, that's pretty high. And so we, we worked with the city through the county partners, and Holly Christman is in the room and did a lot of this negotiating work with some others. And we now have an agreement with the city that they will cut the operating budget by $4 million in order to get to that 3% rate increase instead of 7%. And so we have come down off the 7%. We're now at 3%. While I regret that we have to be in a position to raise rates, I feel like we are in a position where we need to raise rates in order to keep the assets in decent shape and continue to respond to the unfunded mandate, as was stated by the federal government through the consent decree. And in many ways, our hands are tied on, on some of this stuff. And so that's what I'm contemplating as we think through the presentation by MSD, where the reserve is. And as has been stated by the Director, we have some major projects coming up that, again, are going to dictate rate increases. And so I 100% agree that we need more time as we go next year to have public hearings, to engage the public, to talk more about what those projects look like and try to better understand what the projection is for rate increases. Because I think, I will speak for myself, I want to hold those as low as we possibly can while continuing to fund the utility to the point where the customers expect to have this utility funded. So that's where I am. I also, the impervious surface was mentioned. We have had a couple of presentations about the impervious surface. And this is the last tenant of that affordability task force that was put together. It's, it's been the hardest of all to go after because there are so many moving parts with the impervious surface. However, if we were to get to a point where we had direction to implement an impervious surface fee for those that are dumping stormwater into the system, that could result and should result in some relief to folks, the homeowners, who are not dumping a lot of water into the system, you know, having a single-family home or something like that. And so there would be relief there for some of the folks that use, that pay into the system. And so I, I think we need to speed up that work. I know there have been conversations between MSD and stormwater. That's the other piece of this that is important to bring to the table. The other thing we could do, if we've got impervious surface fees going up on those that own the large impervious surface, and, and so there's more money coming in, and then we provide some relief on the other side for those that are not using much water. It's, it's a balancing act, but we could create a fund to talk about overland flooding, which is something that everybody talks about. Because while some of the flooding in basement is SBU, and we're addressing that through this budget, some of it's overland flooding, and it is not addressed in this budget. It's much more difficult to address that. The volume is, is high. But what if we use that balancing act to create a reserve for that, to start to move in that direction? So, you know, we've had some of these conversations. We need to do more work on this. But it's something that we've been talking about over the last few months, just to bring everybody in the loop on that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. And I want the audience to know, and those that are watching, that this board aggressively rejected that 12% possible increase. And then we aggressively reject it, the 7.5%. The 3% now is on the table, and nobody wants to raise the rates any more than me. It'll impact all of us sitting up here and out there. But I think at some point, there's been eight years, no increase. At some point, we will have to bite the bullet and for the, for the raise, raise the rate. I'm also in agreement that we finally got to 3%, as I was saying, but we can't go on like this if we're wanting to meet the requirements of the consent decree and also to be able to provide the services that we need for, for our people in Hamilton County. So we've tried very hard, and so I'm just hoping when we see a 3% rate increase that, you know, that's, that will be it for this year, not coming back for more increases, which may be eventually the following year, we may have to, to do that. And I'm also hoping as we decrease the budget, And I'm also hoping as we decrease the budget, operating budget and the capital budget, and it was agreeable with MSD, they work collaboratively with our, with our team and our staff, and hoping and making sure that agreement is made, but they don't come right back saying, but we need this and we need that. So we're just about set on what the budget should be as it relates to the operating and the capital. And also, I'm in agreement with the 3%, which we will make a decision on Thursday about that. And so as you guys bite the bullet, we'll bite the bullet, too. And so not wanting to, but I'm just really glad that we were able to get to 3% if it's passed. And so we'll see what happens on Thursday. With that being said, I'd like to... Yes? We've already had comments.
Commissioner Reese mentioned about she could use the ARPA money, and I wanted to find out, can you use infrastructure money? Because according to the USDA, they didn't come to use infrastructure money.
Well, Jeff, have you, I know there was lots of money that came down for sewers, but...
Yeah, there, there were some dollars for infrastructure funding. I think we applied for some of it through the state. So I don't know, Diana or Holly, if you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Great question, thank you. For Hamilton County's ARPA dollars that we received, the board did allocate $9 million, five for the Whitewater Township sewer project, and we have roughly a little under four that we're determining how to best use it for potential stormwater projects. So we have a team that's actually working on that as we speak. In addition, Administrator Aludo's point, we have, through the Engineers' Office, applied for projects through the state's ARPA dollars, and I think four of MSD's projects from the top 10 list for the county, and they were not approved for funding by the state.
Can you also answer about, one of the things I wanted us to look at, can we use our, our ARPA dollars to fill the gap this year so we wouldn't have a, I was hoping we wouldn't have to go up? Can you talk about that? You were in contact with the federal folks.
Right, correct. Thank you, Vice President Reese. We did check with our consultant that we have on board through the Prosecutor's Office, allowing ARPA dollars to be used for operational costs for the sewer district, not infrastructure, as was already mentioned. And our consultant said that, based on their knowledge and their research, unfortunately could not be used based on the, the government provisions that are in the final rule in the American Rescue Plan.
All right, with nothing else coming before us this evening, yes, ma'am?
With the rate increase that may happen, I think that just, I just want to say that I think that really points to need to increase the cost.
We've, we've heard that, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so noted, and I'm going to go back with our clerk and read it again, so. Okay, you're welcome. I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.